Thirty seconds.
Welcome to the Abilene City Commission Regular Meeting for April 27, 2020. Due to the COV-19, excuse me, COVID-19, all meetings will be held virtually and streamed live on the City of Abilene's YouTube page. First order of business, calling to order. Meeting. Second order of business is roll call.
This is City Clerk Penny Sokup. Mayor Osterman?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Marshall?
Present.
Commissioner Schaefer?
We won't give a second.
Here.
Commissioner Witt?
Here.
I'll call briefly.
Thank you. Next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
This is City Commissioner Trevor Witt. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I will second your motion.
It's been moved. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. We will do roll call vote. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner? Schaefer?
Yes.
And Commissioner, Mayor Osterman, yes. It has been approved. Next item is Public Comments and Communications. And this is for the City Clerk Penny Sokup. Has there been any new communications?
I have not received any email communications. Trevor, or not Trevor, Travis received the letter regarding the demolition property that you can talk about when you get to that item.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is the New Horizons Hemp Processing LLC land offer.
Mayor Osterman?
Yes.
Jeff and Tina are on the call with, under Veronica's name there.
All right.
Hello, hello, this is Jeff and Tina. I can everybody here?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great.
From what I understand, I thought this was supposed to be an executive session, or am I incorrect on that?
Mayor Osterman, this is Erin Martin, City Attorney.
Yes.
The item before you is, I gather, this may have been preliminarily discussed at a study session, but I was not there, so I apologize if I'm telling you what you already know, but this offer from New Horizon Hemp Processing LLC is an offer to purchase 7.9 acres of land. It comprises two different tracts within the industrial park addition to the City of Abilene. And the offer is, a written offer is in your packet, and it offers two alternative outcomes, one of which offers to accept the land for free pursuant to the city's industrial land funding policy. As you may recall, at the last meeting in April, that industrial land funding policy was revisited and updated to contain some new metrics and requirements for parties wishing to avail themselves of that policy. At the time this written offer was submitted, the statement in it states that the offer will be as they meet the City of Abilene's industrial park policy requirements for free land, based on the number of new employees and the pay scale. It goes on to say, if the City of Abilene does not concur with that assessment, New Horizon Hemp Processing would offer to pay $6,000 per acre for each of the 7.9 acres. I will let others or the applicant speak to how and why they fall within the City of Abilene's industrial park policy, and probably not the best person to describe that, but to your initial question, Mayor Osterman, the, there are a couple of things going on, and depending on what it is that we wish to discuss, we may or may not be able to discuss that in an executive session. Generally, the application of the industrial land funding policy to any applicant needs to be discussed in an open session, as we're doing right now. That is a general policy, and we would not have a basis to talk about its application in an executive session unless you have specific legal questions related to it. However, we do have a legal offer, and to the extent that the City Commission wishes to discuss with legal counsel the desire and response to that offer, we could on a limited basis have that discussed, discussion in an executive session. So we did not bring it to you today in anticipation of an executive session, but if you were to choose after discussing it here today that you want to have further discussion in an executive session, talk about the nuances of the city's response outside of the policy, but if you choose to go toward the model of, we wish to sell it to you, and we wish to make a counter offer, we could have that discussion in an executive session at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin. First of all, I apologize, I should have updated everyone. City Manager Jane Foltz will not be attending this meeting, she had a conflict, but the appropriate employees also have the information to continue on, so that's where we are with City Manager Jane Foltz. Is there, I have a couple of questions myself. What about the zoning for this area? Do we know what the status is, and is it appropriate for this?
This is Clint Frady, Director of Planning and Zoning. The processing plant is fine in light industrial, and that's what it's done at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. And the second question I have is, the real estate offer is not dated, and I know it states this offer is good for 60 days, but I don't have a date on my real estate offer to show what, when the 60 days start.
We're, Mrs. Osterman?
Yes.
Jeff Wilkins, New Horizon. We're pretty open on the, open on the date for that, as far as whatever works best for the city. You know, we're sure not putting any time sensitive.
Yeah, the offer was submitted after everybody started shutting down, so we weren't sure when a meeting would be called, so that's why we left it open-ended.
Okay. Just want to remind everyone to identify themselves when they're on the phone, just only because we are doing a phone meeting.
Mayor Osterman, this is Commissioner Marshall. Marshall? We have, really don't have a plan in front of us. We do not know as, how many employees they're offering, if these are new jobs or existing jobs. We don't have investment, we don't have anything. We have no plan. We just have that they want free land or they want to buy land. We have absolutely no particulars. I need clarification.
All right.
Mayor Osterman, this is Tina Kelly.
Yes.
We can go through that with you guys on that. We did submit a architectural drawing this morning to Jane. I don't know if she forwarded that to you guys or not.
Yes, she did.
To show what our plans were for the area. We do know that we will have a minimum of four full-time employees and probably more during harvest and spring season, and probably actually more than full-time all the time. The wage base will be a minimum of $20 per hour. Our plans are to actually have a, we want to be the first fully integrated hemp processing facility in the state of Kansas, where we actually will grow a small acreage out there so people can come and see that. We will have a walkthrough area so they can actually see all of the processing equipment and how it's done, and then we will also have a retail shop at the same location.
All right.
Mayor Osterman, this is Commissioner Marshall again. Still, again, this is not answering questions. I would ask that we see a plan in front of us, because we have investment limitations and expectations, and we're not saying any of that.
Yes, is that possible? This is Chris Osterman, Mayor. Is that possible to give us a plan, a business plan, so that we can look and actually have something to review?
This is Jeff Wilkins of New Horizon, and yes, it is very, very possible to give you a business plan, more details. We were under the assumption this meeting was just going to be kind of a question and answer.
Okay.
As this process is, with the COVID, so we're just kind of going along with what we've been advised to do. So we apologize if you guys feel, without, for you not having the correct information, or not the correct, but the information in front of you. So we'd be happy to put that forward for the next time, if you guys would be willing to meet with us again. We are thinking about an $800,000 investment out there. We're looking at several buildings for the processing, so it's going to be a pretty substantial investment on our part. And, you know, as far as, we're sure willing to do it on our own, we're not looking for any special treatment, or getting any tax breaks or anything like that. So, but yes, we'd be happy to provide you more information.
That would be great. Do I have any other city commissioners that would like to ask any further questions?
Yeah, this is City Commissioner Trevor Witt, and with how the conversation's going, it's pretty much where my thoughts were at. And yeah, it'll be great to see a fully written-out plan following our, if you guys are wanting to pursue the free land as a part of that policy that we revamped earlier this year. I think at least I have some pretty good bullet points on what we need to see, and we've kind of highlighted that in this conversation of the minimum four employees at $20 an hour and the at least a half million dollar investment. So just to see that in a, in a wind-down plan in a sort of more formalized sort of way would be great for us to have on record. And then also, a part of that policy was the potential to get a recommendation, or we're working with the DKT, which I assume you are yours, since you're working through Veronica Murray's line right now. So, yeah, I love the idea, I love your guys' willingness to pursue this business. I think it's a pretty great location with how that industrial park area is looking like it's going to shape up, but yeah, just having today as a start off of the conversation is great, but would like to see that extra information kind of formalized in future meetings.
Mayor Osterman, this is Commissioner Marshall. This is a question from Mr. Wilkins.
Yes.
Have you personally visited with Russell Stovers? Since you mentioned you were going to have a retail shop out there, how things about that, has that crossed your mind at all?
Uh, no, we have not, wouldn't talk to them about, uh, any, yeah, no, we have not, the, or missing.
That's fine.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just curious if we need to consider that at all, or if you need to consider it too.
Well, it really hasn't crossed my mind, because I know everything that will be in our retail shop should be, I mean, way different than what they're offering, so.
I know it's different, it's the product, I didn't know. I mean, there's nothing wrong with the product, but people are funny.
Well, we should be happy to, I know several people out there, I should be happy to bring it up to them and see if they would be, or what opinion they would have on it.
I, I think that would be beneficial to you too.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes. Yes.
Once, once again, we have somebody willing to come in and make an investment in Abilene, and we're, we're asking questions about their business plan, and I don't think that's our role.
This is Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'm not particularly looking to see a full business plan, just a formalized outline of how New Horizon is looking to meet those requirements of our policy. I wanted to pursue the free land portion.
This is, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner.
I'm not questioning anything about their business, I'm just thinking that we don't need to put additional stipulations on with the neighbors. That's, this is a business, Russell Stovers is a business, they're going to be neighbors. I just don't, I think that's an unnecessary step.
This is Commissioner Marshall.
Yes.
Whether they do it or not, it's up to them. Everybody needs to get along with their neighbors, that has nothing to do with their business plan.
And, Mr. Wilkins, this is Mayor Osterman. In all this conversation, I think it's just easier for you to pursue a simple plan, what you were, what you're expecting and how it's going to work, not necessarily a business plan, but something that we can actually see and reference to, that would make it easier for us to make that decision. As Commissioner Witt said, you know, we have to make decisions versus free land or purchased land. So if you could do that, that would be great. If, does it, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. Yes, we'd be happy to put something together for you. Yes, we would be.
Great.
And we would, and if you just would give us the timeline, I mean, we would make sure that you would all have a copy of it for the next meeting, or whatever works best for the commission.
Mr. Wilkins, this is Mayor Osterman again. We have a study session next Monday. If it's feasible for you to give it to us, so that we can actually talk during the study session, that would be great. So.
It'll be, yeah, we can, we can sure have you, we can sure have something to you by Friday, and then everybody can have the weekend booked out, and we'll also put our phone number on. So if throughout the weekend anybody has any questions, they're more than willing to, we're more than happy to answer those questions. And we would also like to take the time to invite each and every commissioner and you, Mayor, to come out and look at the processing facility that we have started, you know, in Dickinson County. So, just so, I mean, just for curiosity, I mean, to see what we're actually going to be doing. So that is an open invitation to anybody on the call, or anybody that wants to see it. We're trying to be very transparent, and we want everybody to know, I think this is something that's going to be really beneficial for Dickinson County, because our ultimate goal is to have a speed to sale all in Dickinson County, where we're not having, you know, we're not having to outsource anything. So I think that's going to be a pretty positive thing for us, being able to sell a product fast local, is what we're hoping to have some success on, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wilkins. We look forward to further information, and thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
Next item is the Dangerous Structure Report for 206 Southwest Second and Resolution Number 042720-1, setting a public hearing date. Who is going to speak on that?
This is Clint Frady, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Yes.
The, the first structure, did we say it was the one on third?
No, this is Southwest Second.
Okay. On Southwest Second, I did get a letter from the homeowner. Can you allow me to read that, or how does this comment work?
Um, first of all, let's see from the other commissioners if they've actually had a chance to read the letter. Let's go to Commissioner Ryan. Have you read the letter?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I have read the letter.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall?
Yes, I've read it.
Thank you. Commissioner Witt?
Yes, I've read it.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Osterman has also read it, so we have all the information so far. I'll give it back to you, Clinton.
So this is Clint Frady, Director of Planning and Zoning. This is the house that has two fires, and it's one in 1999 and one in 2018. The homeowner has been slowly working on it, but is, you know, finds it hard being, you know, alone to get the job done. She's had a building permit that has expired on it. As of, since the letters went out, there has been yard cleanup that's been done, and she's very adamant that she wants to finish the house, competing with it.
This is Mayor Osterman. I have a question. Has she given you an estimate of how much the cost will be of the improvements, if she is going to follow through, would be?
This is Clint Frady, Director of Planning and Zoning. No, Mayor Osterman, she has not.
Okay. I have read the letter, and it's a pretty enthusiastic, I'll put it that way, endeavor that would, I would think, be very costly to continue with. Does any other commissioners have any comments?
This is Commissioner Marshall. I would think that if we even considered doing, giving her more time or anything like that, we have to take this virus into consideration and see what we would do, what I do.
Okay. Do I have any other commissioners that would like to make any comments?
This is Commissioner Ryan. It kind of seems as if this process with the homeowner has gone off for quite a while. It seems, I guess this is the first time I've gotten any sort of written correspondence, the carefuling at this, from what I've heard in the past, it's kind of like it's very kind of come at the time, and you send her a letter stating that you're going to take the property from her, but then nothing ever really happened. I know in the letter, the virus decided on slowing that down, but I, I do question, would there be any difference if the virus hadn't happened? It doesn't seem like they've been the best track record of following through with their place on the property.
Thank you, Brandon. Any other comments?
This is Commissioner Witt. I'm in the same vein of thought, it's been about two years of this process of, from the first letter to today's date, a little bit more than two years of working with this property owner, and so when it comes to what they need to show, when it comes to making good progress on making this a big structure again, there's not a good history of that. Yeah, we are in a unique situation, but what the next step that we have to vote on today is setting a public hearing for this. And so that, that is the point that I think we're at right now, regardless of our situation. I think still going forward and sending the public hearings to hear the arguments on whether or not we should deem this as a dangerous structure and move forward with that process. I think, I think that next step should be made, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments?
Yes, this is Commissioner Marshall, and hearing all the discussion from Trevor and Brendan, I agree with them, I think we just need to go ahead and set the date.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Actually, Mayor, I'll put that in a motion. I move that for Resolution 472720-1, setting a public hearing date for the property located at 206 Southwest Second.
This is Commissioner Ryan, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Dangerous Structure Report for, excuse me, the Dangerous Structure for 206 Southwest Second and Resolution Number 042720-1. Do I have any further conversation, any comments? We'll go to roll call vote. Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Osterman, yes. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
It has been so approved. Next item, Dangerous Structure Report for 413 Northwest Third and Resolution Number 042720-2, setting the public hearing date. May I have some further information for that, from staff?
This is Clint Frady, Director of Planning and Zoning. This is the building where the brick is separating from the facade and is a fall hazard. The owner came in and got a right-of-way permit to start work for two weeks, but that permit expired for the right-of-way on the 23rd, and that's why the truck is no longer there. This is another property that has been receiving letters for a couple of years now, advising them that they needed to fix the problems with the structure, and they have not complied with those.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any questions from the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Ryan. I would just echo what I discussed on the last property, that they've been given an ample amount of time. I think this one is more important because it's right or downtown, and you have so much foot traffic crossing right underneath that first facade that could potentially come down at any point. I think that's a little, that's a little more important, but I hope those are the top tier. at any point. I think that's a little more important. But I still have the thought or mindset that they've been given ample time and all of their plans, their processes, I think we can afford it.
Thank you, Brandon. Anyone else? I agree with Commissioner Ryan that this has been an ongoing situation and it's in an area that we need to fix because of the safety of the public and what could happen. So I agree with Commissioner Ryan. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Osterman, this is Commissioner Marshall. I move that for Resolution 042720-2, we're setting a public hearing date on the structure 413 Northwest Third.
This is Commissioner Witt. I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution Number 042720-2, Setting the Public Hearing Date. Do I have any further comments or questions? We will go to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Osterman, yes. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
It has been approved. Next item, Consider COV ID-19 Early Retirement Resolution Number 042720-3. And that would be staff?
Thank you, Mayor Osterman. This is Aaron Martin, City Attorney. Ms. Holtz wanted to present this item, but I offered to present it in her absence today. So this is a resolution that, if approved, would establish a temporary early retirement incentive program, and it authorizes the city manager to implement and administer that program consistent with the terms and conditions of the resolution. So under the resolution, the city manager would be authorized to offer participation in this program to one or more city employees who apply to participate and who are deemed eligible by the city manager. And the eligibility requirements are as follows. Number one, and I'm looking at Section 2A in the resolution, the first eligibility condition is the employee applying to participate must be eligible to participate in the Kansas Public Employees Retirement System and/or the Kansas Police and Firemen's Retirement System, if applicable, with full benefits. The time at which any employee can qualify for full benefits is a function of their years of service, but it's generally between the ages of 52 and 55, but it may be lower based on the duration of service. And the employee must be in good standing at the time that they apply, so cannot be subject of any disciplinary proceedings or anything of that nature. If an employee applies, the city manager has the authority to approve or deny that employee's request, taking into account three specific criteria that are identified in Section 3 of the resolution. Those criteria are taken into account, number one, the immediate cost savings to the city resulting from elimination of that retiring employee's compensation and benefits. Number two, the expected cost of replacing that employee, if that's necessary. And number three, the impact on organizational efficiencies and the city's ability to continue performing essential functions if that employee desires. The program would authorize the city manager to pay the usual customary benefits to any retiring employee. And the usual and customary retirement benefits are continued participation in the city's group health plan with 50% contribution of premiums. And then, again, typically, that retiring employee would receive payment for accrued vacation leave and partial payment of accrued state leave. So in addition to those customary and usual benefits, this program would allow the retiring employee to receive a love sum payment equal to 15%, excuse me, the wages and or salaries that would have otherwise been earned during the rest of the calendar year 2020. So that 15% love sum payment is really the additional benefit that would be paid out under this program. And the program is designed to provide an additional tool to the city manager in lieu of or in addition to any other measures that she may be looking at as she responds to budgetary impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Beyond that, I would note that we're not prepared to speak to specific employees here today and would not suggest we do that. This simply requires the framework for the city manager to use this as an additional tool in lieu of other measures that she might be looking at taking. The other item I would note is that the, any employee wishing to participate in this must apply to the city manager. That application will then be reviewed under the criteria that I spoke to earlier. But the resolution establishes that any employee wishing to participate in this, the separation must occur no later than July 1, 2020. So it is looking at immediate or a couple of months away impacts. And any employee deemed eligible and approved to participate in this will then sign an agreement formalizing the separation and containing prior release language to be approved by the city manager. So with that, I would turn it back to you and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Yes.
Mayor Osterman?
Yes.
Yes, this is Commissioner Marshall. I would just ask if this is in response to COVID-19 only or if we've had employees inquire about early retirement because of COVID-19? I can answer that. This is just in response to COVID-19 and budgetary constraints. All right, thank you.
And this is Mayor Osterman. From what I'm reading, that this has to be done by July 1st. Any applications? And with planning for budget for 2021, we need to look at some different avenues. And if I'm reading this correctly, this is a way that we can help improve our budget.
This is Commissioner Witt. Yeah, it looks like this is a tool just like what Case State is working with right now, but acknowledging the fact that there is a short-term cost to this with the goal of a longer-term cost savings, yeah, looking into the 2021 budget. So just a point of clarification, I guess, for Penny and Marcus is that we do have the room to be able to offer this incentive, acknowledging that it is a short-term cost upfront with the goal of a longer-term cost saving.
Yes, this is St. Clark, Penny Soca. And potentially, there are a couple of employees in the situation that need these terms. If looking at just those couple of employees, the cost savings, the cost savings for the rest of the year would be about $67,000, and the expense would be approximately $9,000. So that is your difference. And then for the 2021 budget, you're looking at about $135,000 in savings.
This is Commissioner Marshall. Do you have any estimates on training and hiring costs for couples that are eligible?
Well, I don't believe we would fill those positions at this point.
This is Mayor Osterman. Do I have any further comments or questions from the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Ryan. I'd like to quick clarification. So this is just for employees that have applied for, correct? I guess they won't be, I guess I just want to make sure it's not a tool to push people out there, that makes sense?
Yes, and yes, you are correct. This is a voluntary program, and while the city manager is vested with the discretion to approve or disapprove any particular applicant based upon the criteria, the resolution, I think Section 1 contains the language that it may be of interest to you, and it speaks to offering participation in the program to one or more city employees who voluntarily apply. And so this would not be a tool to separate from anyone who does not wish to apply.
Okay, I wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
And from what I understand, this is Mayor Osterman, this is a voluntary early retirement, so to speak, and that makes it a positive thing only because of what we're dealing with in future taxes and budgets.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Marshall. Again, my comment is on the wording in Section 1. It says one or any. It's like, it looks like we're targeting one or more. Why doesn't it just say any employee that wants to apply? So it doesn't look like we're, we got people in mind and we want to get rid of them.
Did you?
Mayor, it works.
Yes.
City Attorney. That's a word choice, and I will take full responsibility for taking the lead on drafting this for Ms. Holtz and staff's consideration. The thought behind one or more was simply to acknowledge that pursuant to the city manager's discretion and taking into account what is in the city's best interest, that may be one, it may be two, it could be more. And did not want to use limiting language, but certainly the use of the word any would have been equally appropriate, and it may be more appropriate. So I'm not arguing with you on that point. If you wish to change it, we can certainly do that. But the thought behind it was, it could be one if that's ultimately what the city manager viewed as in the best interest of the organization.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin, this is Mayor Osterman. Can we amend this to say that? If we approve this resolution?
It's appropriate to amend that phrase and replace the phrase "one or more" with "any." And to accomplish that objective, it would simply be a matter of whoever makes the motion to approve the resolution, just add on that you are approving it subject to an amendment of Section 1, that, and in that language I just spoke to.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions by the city commissioners?
Mayor Osterman, this is Commissioner Marshall. I move to consider COVID-19 Early Retirement Resolution Number 042720-3, amending it to read in Section 1, instead of saying "one or more" to say "any."
This is Commissioner Witt. I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve Resolution Number 042720-3, excuse me, 042720-3, with subject to change Section 1, that would say "any" instead of "one or more." Do I have any further questions? We'll go to roll call vote. Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Osterman, yes. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
It has been so approved. Thank you. Next item, City Manager Reports. Do we have anything from the city clerk, Penny Sokka?
Mayor Osterman, this is Finance Director Marcus Ralchild. I do have notes from Jane here
All right.
that I'll go ahead and run through with you.
Okay, thank you.
The work continues on Northeast Drain Injepment, and staff hopes to bring that submission in the next few weeks. Work continues with the Rural Water District proposed rate change. Aaron Martin is finalizing the response to the Rural Water District, and is hoping to get some information back to us in the next two days, and we're sort of staff to review. Department has continued to evaluate staffing and operational expenses on a weekly basis in order to ease financial shortfall during this pandemic. Staff is getting estimates for capital improvement projects for the 2021 budget. We will present ideas at a May study session. Department has given operational budget to me, the Finance Director, and they're beginning to, we're putting together the proposed budget currently, so we are moving forward with that. Just got the state form updated on the state website, and so we're kind of being able to put the early processes in place for the 2021 budget. The work on the 2019 audit continues. They are anticipated to complete that mid-May, and so we will plan a presentation from our auditors for late May. Hopefully, if everything goes as planned and stays on schedule, and we'll have the audit back and complete. There's been a request to revisit the laying in chicken and duck policy in backyard within city limits. We will look at this again in May. It was last looked at in October of 2018. Staff is also looking at better ways to protect employees using some type of barrier when you open the city offices to the public. So Jane, I know, is looking at some options for our front water clerks where we may be able to put up a glass screen or a fiberglass type of protection in front of the clerks to, so that we can essentially someday open back up to the public and do that as safely as possible. And Doug Smart delivered the dividend, or insurance dividend check, so from Smart Insurance. The city did receive a check of $39,943.13. You know, Doug typically likes to come and present that submission, but based on the circumstances, we want to make sure we gave him credit that we did receive a nice check back. We always are happy to see additional revenue come into the budget, so. And last but not least, we have a big thanks going out to Last Chance Graphics for sponsoring the, imprinting the "We Are All In This Together," hashtag availing strong for yards and signs and business signs. I think that is the complete list. Do you have any questions on that?
No, thank you, Marcus. And I just want to say thanks to all the staff for their hard work. This has been actually new territory for everyone, and everyone's been very professional, and I really appreciate that. So thank you for all your hard work. Do I have any other comments from the city commissioners? Next item is to consider a motion to adjourn the April 27, 2020 city commission meeting.
This is Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
All right, so move.
Okay.
I will second. This is Commissioner Marshall. I will second his motion.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to adjourn, have a motion to adjourn the April 27, 2020 city commission meeting. Roll call vote. Mayor Osterman, yes? April 27, 2020 city commission meeting. Roll call vote. Mayor Osterman, yes. Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
I might have caught a lot of crap before.
Commissioner Marshall?
Yes, even though Commissioner Ryan wants to say.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer? It is so adjourned. Thank you for your time.
Bye.
Bye.